And I've.
So, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for attending the special session that we have. So I'll go ahead to call order. So I want to welcome everybody to January thirtieth subcommittee meeting. This teleconference meeting is with advisory board members, city staff and members of the public that will be participating remotely. Moving on to our next, which is our roll call. I would like to introduce staff and subcommittee members who are present with us now. Subcommittee members include Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor, Councilmember Drew Combs, and staff present with us today is Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, Executive Assistant to City Manager Nicole Castados, Library and Commissioner Services Director Sean Reinhardt, myself, Acting Assistant Library Community Services Director Rondell Howard, Admin Service Director Brittany Mello, Retired at New Intent for Admin Services Mary Morris May Orga, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, sorry, and Library Community Services Librarian to Nora Mercer and also Intern Finance and Budget Manager Ronnie Singh. Moving over down to our regular business item and why we're here today with this special session. Just to give us some information, under regular business, the subcommittee considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that are required, that require the subcommittee's approval. Action item or regular business item C1, which will go into is a review, staff recommendations and create city council, community funding, subcommittee recommendations for the 2023 community, for the 2022-23 community funding allocations. So while, again, I'd like to add some more notes as we just go through this session. While public comments are welcome and encouraged, please be advised that the subcommittee cannot accept any new information about the applicants at this time. This is just to ensure that all applications are treated equally on the merits of their respective applications. The deadline to submit information was the application deadline, which was on October 12, 2022. In fairness to all applicants, no new information can be considered after the deadline, and thank you in advance for any of your comments and for your understanding. With that, Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
Okay, so at this time, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please notify staff by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you're dialing in, you can use star nine to engage the raise hand function. And it does not look like we have any public comment on this item. Thank you, Rondell.
Well, thank you, Nicole. So moving on now, we'll open, we'll open this up for the subcommittee to discuss and to discuss further.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. And is it possible to put the staff recommendation on the screen? Thank you. And I, will you make the suggestion or not where we can just go down the list? Or how would you like Councilmember Combs and I to proceed?
So right now, it's just kind of reviewing. And so wherever you have questions for staff, we can, we can kind of direct our answers once you go through. So if you want to just look through each line item, if there's specific ones that you have, feel free just to, just to comment on that and we can, we can go back and forth as far as answering and getting any information that you need.
Just a question here from True. This, the subcommittee isn't going to see this again, correct? After this, it goes to council for approval, or will the subcommittee see this, this list again?
In the past, once, once whatever recommendations were made, I mean, if, if we, we won't go over this because we have a date for our council many, but for this to go to council, but if that's something that you would like to review afterwards, I, that would, Nicole, are we okay with?
That was. Yeah, just so to be, to be clear, yeah, if, if the, if the current default is that we have this session and then the idea is that the next time this comes, it will be before council. Let's just proceed based on that, that assumption, which is fine with me. So based on that, I just would say that like, let's, let's walk through every, every line item here and, and just so that it's clear where Cecilia and I stand. And then, and then, and then we're, we're done with that. And so, and so ability path is that the first one that I'm seeing? Okay. So I am, I, I'm, I'm good with this, Cecilia. I'll defer to you to, to, you know, determine whether you're good with this or you want to see something different.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. I, just out of curiosity, they requested 10,000 and then the staff recommended three. Is that based on how many residents in Menlo Park are actually served by Ability Path? Or is it based on the total funding available?
It was a consideration of both. And so we, we looked at what was allocated, what we were able to work with and what we did in the past with these groups. So majority of our, of our decisions and our recommendations that you have in front of you are based off the Menlo Park residents and the impact that they have for, for our Menlo Park residents. So yes, to both.
And were there any considerations just with, with cost increase? I'm sure it's with most organizations that there has been some increase in costs just for services, if that was a consideration as well.
No, and, and, and staff, feel free to, to jump in if you have, if you have any comments, but the ratings that we went off of and, and kind of how we went about this was off of goals and eligibility, the completeness of the application and then the immediate impact that it has for the community. So that determination wasn't really in the criteria as far as our, our considerations, our recommendations that that's in here in front of you.
Okay, thank you. I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation.
Should I just go down the line?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the, the next line with the Acknowledged Alliance requested amount was 20,000. Last year, they received from the city 17,500, 17,500 staff recommendation. This year is 16,000.
I'm, I'm supportive.
I'm supportive as well.
Awesome. Next line is all five. Last year was 13,000. I mean, this year requested was 13,000, sorry. Last year amount, they received 10,000. Staff is recommending that they receive 10,000 again this year.
Here, I recommend that we go to the requested amount of 13,000.
I agree.
Okay, and then next is Cora, Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse. This, this group requested 75,000. Last year, received 75,000. And this year, staff is recommending 5,000, which is 2,500, 2,500 less than what they received before.
I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
I agree as well.
Moving on to East Palo Alto Tennis and Tutor Program, EPAT. Last year, I mean, requested amount 15,000. Last year was 12,005. That was, that was received or the city was able to produce for them. 12,000 is the recommended amount for this year for, for EPAT.
So yeah, I defer to you on this. I would be comfortable with going to the requested amount, but if you want to stick with the staff recommendation, I'm supportive of that also.
I, I agree, Drew, with the requested amount of 15,000.
All right, next is Family Connections. Requested amount 10,000. Last year, they were able to receive 7,500. This year, where staff is recommending that they receive 8,000.
I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
I agree.
Next is Human Investment Project. They are requesting 15,000. Last year, they were able to receive 15,000. This year, staff is recommending 12,000.
I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation.
You know.
Next on our list is Job Train. Like, requesting 10,000. Last year, received 10,000. Staff is recommending another 10,000 for this next fiscal year.
I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation.
I'm sorry, I'm supportive too. I gave a thumbs up, but didn't realize maybe you guys actually have to hear my voice. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to Legal, Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. Requested amount 8,000. Last year, received 8,000. Staff is recommending another 8,000 for this year as well.
I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation.
I agree.
Thank you. Next line is Life Moves. They are requesting 20,000. Last year, received 20,000. This year, staff is recommending that they receive 16,000.
And I have a question. And this is specifically for Haven House and not any of the other programs that Life Moves offers. So any of their homeless outreach or any other work that they do? Second, go look at their application.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Just as a, a side note, in their application, it says the funds from this grant would support staff salaries for children programming. And this is something that I've spoken about just in the past with Life Moves and their homeless outreach team, and that is just really focusing on a living wage for people. Social services is a much needed field for our community members. And if a living wage isn't there, it makes it hard to recruit and retain folks. So I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
Me too.
Thank you both. Next is Live in Peace. The requested amount was 50,000. Last year, they were able to receive 10,000. Staff is recommending that they receive the same amount as 10, as 10,000 for this year.
I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
Me too.
Awesome. Next is the Menlo Rotary Community Foundation. They are requesting to, requesting for 1,500. Did not receive anything, but in the prior year before, which was fiscal year 2021, they received 1,500, which they asked for this year. So staff is recommending that they do receive the 1,500 again.
I have a question. Each time that they apply, the request is always the same amount?
Nicole, do you, I believe so.
Not necessarily. It really depends on, on, they, they have the opportunity to request different amounts, but for this one in particular, they did not apply last year, but the year before, they requested 1,500 and received 1,500.
And my follow-up question is, if the only amount that we can suggest for council is the amount that's applied for, or is it possible if a council member wanted to give more?
Ah, that's a good question. I want to say in years past, I have not seen that done. Not that it can't be done, but I do believe we go by what they request, not more than that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Combs, do you have any thoughts on this one? It just, the amount seems small. And I know that they do, they do a whole lot.
Yeah, like I, well, let's try, like, I could be comfortable with, like, let's double that and give them 3,000. Of course, this would require them to, since they've only asked for 1,500, obviously, we'd have to go back to them and make sure that they were okay with the 3,000. But if you were okay with that, I'd be okay with that. I think that that's still like represent among the smaller, you know, donations made out, but, but it would provide a little bit more. I mean, obviously, we're all familiar with all the work that Rotary does in the community.
I'm supportive of that. So, Mr. Howard, could you put him down for 3,000? Thank you.
Our next line item would be Nuestra Casa de East Palo Alto. Reka, they're requesting for 10,000. Last year, they were able to receive 10,000 and staff is recommending that they receive 10,000 again.
I'm, I'm supportive.
I'm supportive as well.
Next line item is, sorry, I don't want to butcher this name, but on Buttsman Services of San Mateo County. They're, they're asking for a requested amount of 3,000. Last year, they were able to receive 2,500. And this year, staff is recommending the, the full amount of 3,000.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive also.
Awesome. Next, next applicant is Omniware Networks, who is requesting 2,000. This is a new applicant, so we have no history or records of any request. And so with the amount that they're requesting, staff is recommending 2,000 as well.
And this is for senior services?
Yes. Yeah, senior services. They are, let me bring up their application. Located in Palo Alto on Linton Avenue. And yeah, senior services. 65 and older. Yeah, primarily senior services.
Do they provide any services onsite with the city or is everything they do off, offsite? Or they have their own, do they have their own location?
I think they, so this is something that they would like to bring to the city of Menlo Park. They're, they're, they're based in Palo Alto, but they're trying to kind of get this funding to bring services here.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation since they're new. Just curious as the amount, because it, it seems small.
I'm supportive also.
Next, next applicant would be Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. Requested amount is 25,000. They received, they did not apply last year, but the previous fiscal year 2021, they did receive 15,000. And so staff is recommending that they do receive the full 25,000 this fiscal year.
I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
I'm also supportive.
Our next applicant is Peninsula Volunteer. Requested amount is 50,000. Amount received last year was 20,000. Staff is recommending that they receive the same amount as last year, which is 20,000.
I'm supportive of staff recommendation.
I'm also supportive.
Next line item is Ravenswood Classroom Partners, formerly known as All Student, All Students Matter. Requested amount 15,000. Amount received last year was 10,000. Staff is recommending the full amount of 15,000 for this, this applicant.
And this is, this is not the school district applying. This is a program within the school or a partner?
Looking back at their application, they are, one second.
I believe they're a partner.
Yeah. They work in collaboration with, with the school district.
Okay, and, and thank you for looking the information up. I'm asking because there, there's something on the next line that's Ravenswood and it specifically says, let's see, with no portion of the funding to be used for REF. So just making sure that whatever the funding is, it's specific to the schools in Menlo Park and not to the school district.
Yes, I don't believe it's part of the school district.
Councilmember Combs, do you have any thoughts on this one?
I'm supportive.
Okay, I am too.
Next is Ravenswood Education Foundation. Requested amount 15,000. Last year, they were able to receive 10,000 and staff is recommending the full amount of 15,000.
So REF means, that's the Ravenswood Education Foundation overhead expenses?
Yeah, so I think they're saying that like no staffing, like, right? And so this will be completely problematic, I think, in, in where the funds go to.
Okay, I'm, I'm supportive.
I'm also supportive.
Our next applicant is Rebuilding Together Peninsula. Last, requested amount 10,000. Last year, received 10,000. Staff is recommending that they receive the same amount for this year as well.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive as well.
Next applicant is Samaritan House. Requested amount 27,500. Last year, they were able to receive 20,000. Staff is recommending that they receive the same amount as last year, 20,000.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive as well.
Great. Our next applicant is Service League of San Mateo County. They're, they are requesting 3,000. Last year, they were able to receive 2,500. This year, staff is recommending the requested amount of 3,000.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive as well.
Next applicant is Star Vista. They are requesting 45,000. Last year, we were able to provide them with 25,000. This year, staff is recommending that we give them last year's amount of 25,000.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive as well.
Next applicant is the Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula. Requested amount 10,000. Last year, they received 15,000. Staff is recommending that we give the requested amount of 10,000.
I'm supportive.
Supportive also.
Upwood Scholars is our next applicant. They have requested the amount of 5,000. Last year, they were able to receive 2,500. Staff is recommending that they receive the same amount as last fiscal year, which is 2,500.
I'm actually comfortable giving them the requested amount.
I'm supportive.
Next is our Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired. They are requesting the 15,000. Last year, we're able to receive 15,000. Staff recommendation is 15,000 again for this year.
I'm supportive of the request.
I'm, I'm supportive also.
Our last applicant is, is Youth Community Service. They are requesting 10,000. Last year, they were able to receive 7,500. This year, staff is recommending that they receive the full 10,000.
I'm supportive.
I'm, I'm also supportive.
Awesome. So our totals at the bottom is, as you can see, the requested amount for this year was close to half a million, came up to 425,500. The amount that was received last year again was 269,500. Staff is recommending that we, that we, that we give out the, the full 297,000. It seems like we're all on the same page. There's just an additional thousand bucks that was as, that was added. So the to, the new total is now 298,000.
I'm not understanding that, seeing as how, I think we had it probably get 10 or 15,000 more than what the staff was recommending. Because like, right now, we just boosted it up by $2,500 for that last one. So it seems like something is. So it seems like something is not being accounted for.
I'm fourteen. For New Wester Casa.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There we go. Okay.
Does it sound right? Yeah.
Yeah, that looks better.
So the new recommendation is, is three hundred thou- is three hundred and seven thousand.
Yeah, cool. A couple of questions. So did we, w- was there a specific budgeted amount for community funds in the most recent budget? And, and what, what was that? I read, or is this, or is this going forward and it will be added to a future budget? Like? Does anyone?
Uh, the budgeted amount was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand for this fiscal year. We would do a budget amendment to get it to the three oh seven.
Okay, so, so that was what was in there, was, was in the budget. Okay, th- thanks for that.
You're welcome.
And then, um, an- another question is that I remember last, I think it was the last or two years ago, we, we actually got a request from like the Menlo Park School District or, or some closely affiliated. And, and we said, hey, we were going to reach out to the Menlo Atherton um, School Foundation, I think, which is, um, a- a- and suggested they make a request. Do we know if that ever, ever happened, that, that we reached out to the, to the, 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 the school's foundation, um, to, to make a request? Cause, cause obviously there, there isn't one that came in, um. But do we know if that happened? I, I know there, there's lots of new faces, so. I appreciate if, if, uh, y- you guys don't specifically recall.
I don't recall. I don't know if it was a matter of it being the school district too, that was, uh, uh, that did not meet the parameters in the policy.
Yeah, yeah, that was the whole point. Like, yeah, we said that we, we, the school district couldn't meet the parameters with that, like, and, 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 and we denied that request, but that we were going to reach out to the, the, the foundation um, and say that they could submit, uh, a request. Um, so, um, obviously it didn't come in and the, um, a- and, and time is up. So, but, but just wanted some, some clarity on that. Um, m- my other r- request is that I, I would like to, when this comes with our council, the extent to which, um, um, cause this has to go to council to be approved, right? If, if I'm remembering the process. Um, if, if we also like add in something like, um, I, I, I don't know, like a couple of thousand dollars or something as, as a budget um, for, for advertising going forward. Um, I'd, I'd really like to sort of, one, have some m- monies, um, that are clearly designated to advertise this program and, and a specific sort of outreach plan that either the, the subcommittee or the council can look at going, going forward. Um, cause I mean, just to be clearly go, like, I, I like, I still have this issue and I, and, and I feel it's more um, a statement of me than anyone, cause I, I think I've been associated with this for like four years now. Um, that we don't, um, we don't publicize enough, um, that the, the, the community or the city gives out this, this money. And so I, I'd like to see things like, like, um, um, uh, o- o- like on the Almanac, some, some of those banner advertisements. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see maybe like a banner at the top of the city's um, homepage. I don't know if that's something we can actually do, um, or even, um, uh, social media and other internet, um, advertising. Like, right? Obviously that would be really targeted, um, to just get, get it out there a little bit more that the, um, um, that the city provides, um, pro- provides us this money. And I feel that it's always a mental note that I make every time we do this, and then I forget and go online. And then, and then a year later, I'm like, oh, um, what, um, y- you know, what did we do? Like sort of additional to make sure that we, um, we really got it out there, that, that the city is giving out this money. And so, um, so just wanted to, to sort of put that request out there and see, um, see if, uh, uh, the, the, the vice mayor was, was supportive.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. And I am definitely supportive, um, because folks have reached out to me and, and asked me about this process, um, when it was too late. So it'd be great, um, for the city to do a little more with, with advertising. And I know some of these organizations that have been around for quite some time, um, are already in the loop, so they know to look out for it in the fall. Um, and probably a lot of folks don't. So just want to make sure that we give equal access, um, to information.
No, note taken. Uh, Nicole and I can definitely look into that and make sure that that we can work on a marketing plan to better advertise, so we can get more community, um, in, in different partners that can come in and actually use the money. Not saying that these groups can't use the money, but to be able to spread the wealth a little bit more. So we'll, we'll definitely take that note and look into that. So thanks for the suggestion.
And, and one other, um, item, actually there's two. Um, one is I don't know if this city has created or, or, um, a matrix that shows how many organizations are providing a certain service. So Star Vista and Acknowledge Alliance, both do mental health at Menlo Atherton High School. So just looking at, and it's not to say that they don't need it, considering the student population, um, in the amount of need, um, around mental health, um, definitely supportive of increasing more. But I don't know if there's a partnership between Star Vista and Acknowledge Alliance. Um, and I know this is a, a heavy lift for the city to make sure that who we are partnering and funding, um, that they are communicating with one another. But I think it's important. I think it's important. Um, and then the other item is that I noticed, and I believe at least on one application, that, um, folks are still referring to Bell Haven as Eastern Menlo Park, um, when geographically it's not eastern. So I'm hoping that in the future, when people apply for things, if they're going to use the term eastern, if they could define it, um, if or not use it, um, it's up to you. Um, people know where the Bell Haven neighborhood is, so that would be helpful. And, and I don't believe I have any other feedback.
Rondell, you're on mute.
That. Um, so are we, are we able to confirm and consent that we can move on with, with what we have here? Just a formal consent from, from our subcommittee members?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm supportive.
Awesome. Um, well, with that, we can move forward and we can adjourn the meeting. Appreciate everybody coming out. This meeting is adjourned now at two forty-two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, Rondell.
Yes.
Thank you.